We have Flock Safety, which is an investigative tool that allows you to investigate crimes that could have been associated with a specific crime. And so we can share some more examples of that, but the investigative portion is really important because we know we have to balance the need to provide law enforcement with the data that they need to investigate and the protections of civil liberties. So we're not just tracking long-term where the data could potentially be misused. And so we've really tried to create that balance with that 30-day time period. You can go to the next slide. The most important part of the conversation for councils, for elected officials, mayors, for city managers, is how you make that balance, right? How you prioritize safety and also make sure that you have the right mechanisms to hold folks accountable and to be transparent with your community about how you're using this technology. We at Flock have tried to make that easier for you to do. So you can go to the next slide. There's a couple of things about a Flock partnership that I want to highlight. I know that you guys are still in the very early stages, but if you choose to pursue a Flock Safety partnership, you guys will own your footage. That means that you guys determine who you share with, who your police department will not share with, and they'll include those details in a policy. We at Flock will never sell your information, and we don't share it without your permission. I've already talked about that 30-day data retention, but we also want to highlight how important it is to provide this objective data to police, especially because we know how unreliable eyewitness accounts are, right? And so by focusing on the things that are objectively illegal and providing an objective data point in an investigation, you can often get a hold of or get a handle on any kind of misinformation or leads that aren't going to be accurate. We have top-level cybersecurity. I'm happy to answer more questions about that. We're SOC 2 certified, and we store end-to-end in different encrypted keys. We also require an investigative reason for every single search that's done in our system. And that investigative reason is then proactively reported in an audit portal, where your chief can then see every single time her officers search the system and why they search, what filters they use. And that's for your officers in your community, but also anybody else who searches in the system as well. And so we made that tool to really be able to allow our chiefs to act in the event that a tool is misused, because we all know we can't prevent there from being misused. We can only act in the event that it happens. I've already talked about a couple of other things. You know, we're not facial recognition, not predictive policing. We don't connect to any third-party databases, so the law enforcement network is totally separate from Flock Safety system. We don't connect to Carfax, to DMV, right? All of those things are separate from Flock Safety as an additional privacy protection. And then the last thing I want to highlight, I don't know if you can click on that transparency portal link, but we created a transparency portal that we provide to our customers, and it allows them to communicate with their communities how they use the technology, right? So this is an example out of Jackson, where they've highlighted some of their policy details, right? They highlight what's detected, what's not detected, how they use it, who in their department has access to the information. They also highlight the number of cameras that they own and the number of hot list hits. So, you know, those hot lists, that's what I said about the stolen vehicles, those alerts that they've gotten in 30 days. Other communities share even more details. Some communities share their public search audits or who all they share access with. So depending on what you all would want to include in your portal, this is a tool that we've made so that you can be transparent and let people know how exactly you're using the system, what it is and what it is not. To conclude, I'll go back to the presentation, and I just want to talk you guys through a couple of real-world examples, right? So you can see, in addition to what Chief Moise shared locally and from Georgia, some other examples of places where this technology has made the difference. So you can go forward, I think, three slides? Yeah, that one, excuse me.
I was going to talk about that one, and now you brought that one up.
Yeah, so this is out of Dearborn in a really sad situation. This woman was reported missing in Murfreesboro, Tennessee. This is a young mother with children, and she was believed to be taken and endangered because of her partner in a relationship. And no one had any idea where she was, but the Murfreesboro Police Department is a Flock Safety customer, and they worked to put her, the vehicle that they thought she might be associated with into our system. And they actually got a hit on that vehicle in Dearborn, and it ended up initiating a short chase where some gun buyer ended up being exchanged with the Michigan State Police and the individuals driving the car. And when everything ended, unfortunately, they found this woman who had been kidnapped deceased in the back of the vehicle. And so this is an example of a situation in which the six-year-old, who had no idea where her mom was, would have never had resolution about what happened unless the police had this data to be able to act. You can go to the next slide. This is a situation out of Dayton. This happened, actually, in February, and this individual, Mr. Hamilton, shot and murdered someone that he knew in an interpersonal conflict, which unfortunately is where most gun violence happens. He then stole a vehicle to flee the scene, and Dayton had installed our cameras, and they actually immediately found Mr. Hamilton. And those detectives said that Flock needed to be highlighted because without that technology, they wouldn't have been able to find this suspect. You can go to the next slide. This is out of Amburin. A 26-year-old woman was hit by a vehicle on a service road, and unfortunately, they weren't going to have a lead unless they had installed our technology. They had found some debris at the end of the road, and they actually had an image of the vehicle around the time that they passed, or around the time that they expected that it had happened. And they ended up finding that suspect by identifying the vehicle elsewhere and matching the debris to his vehicle where he confessed to the crime. You can go to the next slide. This is the example she talked about earlier, an Amber Alert. And then the last one, I think, can just show the longer-term implications, you can go to the last slide, yeah, of installing this technology. So when we provide, when police have the tools that they need to effectively solve crime, we know that clearance rates can decrease. We know that crime can be deterred and reduced. And this is in Cobb County, Georgia, one of our very first customers. After two years, they have solved 100% of their homicides, which is really unheard of in a county that large and with crime as high as it is in the metro Atlanta area. Police Chief Van Hoeder credits our technology specifically with being able to help in get those cases cleared. So I'm happy to answer any questions from you guys now or later, but thanks so much for having us to talk about it.
I do have a question, Mayor.
Thank you.
Go on.
Thank you so much for being here and giving us these presentations and illustrations. So what is the cost for the city?
Yeah, so we are $3,000 per device per year.
$3,000 per device, okay. So if this, every crimes or every investigations, who is responsible for the actual cost? I know we pay for the equipment, but say a victim called in, and now there's an investigation going on. So the patrons pay for it, or it's data?
Yes, that's a great question. So we, we are a subscription model, so that means that whoever owns the device will pay a yearly subscription fee. So if, let's say, Hamtramck had one device, they would pay $3,000 per year if they leased that device from us.
Is there, like, do they have to sign a consent form before there's an investigation going on? Like, anyone requested, like, would you take in a, you know?
Are you talking about, like, the victim of a crime?
Victim of the crime, like, do they have to sign a form to give away their privacy, their rights to get an investigation going on?
No, because basically, we're taking a police report from them, and then using either data that they, and information that they have provided. Maybe it was a red car, maybe they knew part of the license plate, and then we're using, so their information isn't being compromised in any way because it's not part of the data coming off the license plate reader. It's strictly just trying to find a license plate for a vehicle, which we all know is visible to the upper-day public the other day when you brought it down.
Sure. Thank you. I mean, I, I, I'd love to see the community's safety, you know? This is a tool that we can utilize and give, given the benefit of the doubt that is, is going to help the community's safety. So it's pretty good.
Mr. Mayor, put them.
Okay, she introduces us, it's up to us to what we're going to think about it. If you don't find the plate, how are you going to read it? You got to think about that, too.
Mr. Mayor, so, so Ms. Laura, thank you. I really be big supporter of the camera system. I've been talking to Chief Moise and, you know, City Manager previously to have those kinds of systems in place in our city to reduce the crime. And if you reduce the crime, our insurance rate is going to go down. The safer city will pay less money for their insurance. Many people are complaining with our Hamtramck City Insurance at high. I don't know, one thing is not matching with you, what you said, I got to use a little Google search. It's a 2,500-four-part camera to install, or you said 3,000?
Yes, yeah, we just had a price increase. That $2,500 was.
So increase to our city and start from all?
Sadly, we increased on April, on April 1st. Yeah, so we had been the same price since before the pandemic, and due to all of our, our part costs, we had to increase.
And you have to sign up for seven years, or how does it go?
No, we have, different customers do different things. We have some cities that will do one year, some cities will do two, or as much as five.
What is your headquarters located at?
Our headquarters is in Atlanta, Georgia.
Don't you?
Do you guys 25/7, 24/7 customer service, or?
We are, yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you to give us the presentation. I have a question. Sometimes a fake car dealer plate, are you able to catch those things?
Yes, we, so we catch an image of every vehicle that passes, and so the way that it will work in the system is if it's, if it's a temporary tag or a fake plate, it will be indicated as not, not an actual plate.
And why you keep the record only for one month?
Yeah, so we created that standard as, as a balance between, like I said, the need to be able to provide investigative data and then not wanting, wanting to have so much data that could potentially be misused. And so we tried to create that middle path between some privacy advocates and then public safety advocates.
Thank you very much. I'd like to move forward, I hope.
We're not voting, but this is just a presentation. But is it, can it be used to track, you know, speeding cars and reckless drivers, too?
So it's not used for traffic enforcement. I will say that we've had some communities where they do have a lot of reckless driving, which is a crime in their community. They can't identify the vehicles that were on the road during that time period, but they have to use that in addition to other data in order to make a case about reckless driving.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any more questions?
I've got a quick question, Mayor. Is this tied into Lean?
We do not tie directly to Lean, no. All of that has to be searched outside of our database.
All right, so we'll move to the additions, deletions, agenda approval, and we have Resolution 2023-72 approving termination of contract with Z Part Lawn and Snow and proposing it to BCL Contractors. So we move it to.
If we're going to add, please?
This is what we need, yeah, I'll make a motion to add. Second. Yeah. So we're going to add it to be G, FGH, right? Be.
A, B, C, D, E? No, sorry.
A, B, C, H, A, B, C, S.
Does everyone agree to add a piece?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah.
Now we can have a motion to discuss the resolution, please.
I'll make motion to discuss the current issue.
No, 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 accordingly.
Not yet. It's in the new business now. Okay. All right, so we'll get to it later, but now we have the public comment section.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Veronica Smith? Hamtramck resident, three minutes.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Veronica Smith. I just come here, you probably seen in your email, I'm also.
...missing in Murfreesboro, Tennessee. This is a young mother with children. And she was believed to be taken and endangered because of her partner in a relationship. And no one had any idea where she was. But the Murfreesboro Police Department is a Flock Safety customer, and they worked to put her, the vehicle that they thought she might be associated with, into our system. And they actually got a hit on that vehicle in Dearborn. And it ended up initiating a short chase, where some gun buyer ended up being exchanged with the Michigan State Police and the individuals driving the car. And when everything ended, unfortunately, they found this woman, who had been kidnapped, deceased in the back of the vehicle. And the two individuals that were driving the car were on their way to Michigan to get rid of the, or not to Michigan, excuse me, to Canada to get rid of the body. And so this is an example of a situation in which the six-year-old, who had no idea where her mom was, would have never had resolution about what happened, unless the police had this data to be able to act. You can go to the next slide. This is a situation out of Dayton. This happened, actually, in February. And this individual, Mr. Hamilton, shot and murdered someone that he knew in an interpersonal conflict, which unfortunately is where most gun violence happens. He then stole a vehicle to flee the scene. And Dayton had installed our cameras. And they actually immediately found Mr. Hamilton. And those detectives said that Flock needed to be highlighted because without that technology, they wouldn't have been able to find this suspect. You can go to the next slide. This is out of Amburin. A 26-year-old woman was hit by a vehicle on a service road. And unfortunately, they weren't going to have a lead unless they had installed our technology. They had found some debris at the end of the road, and they actually had an image of the vehicle around the time that they passed, or around the time that they expected that it had happened. And they ended up finding that suspect by identifying the vehicle elsewhere and matching the debris to his vehicle where he confessed to the crime. You can go to the next slide. This is the example she talked about earlier, an Amber Alert. And then the last one, I think, can just show the longer-term implications. You can go to the last slide, yeah. Of installing this technology. So when we provide, when police have the tools that they need to effectively solve crime, we know that clearance rates can decrease. We know that crime can be deterred and reduced. And this is in Cobb County, Georgia, one of our very first customers. After two years, they have solved 100% of their homicides, which is really unheard of in a county that large and with crime as high as it is in the metro Atlanta area. Police Chief Van Hoosier credits our technology specifically with being able to help in getting those cases cleared. So I'm happy to answer any questions from you guys now or later. But thanks so much for having us to talk about it.
I do have a question, Mayor.
Go on.
Thank you so much for being here and giving us these presentations and illustrations. So what is the cost for the city?
Yeah, so we are $3,000 per device per year.
$3,000 per device. So if this, every crimes or every investigations, who is responsible for the actual cost? I know we pay for the equipment, but say a victim called in and now there's an investigation going on. So the patrons pay for it, or it's data?
That's a great question. So we are a subscription model. So that means that whoever owns the device will pay a yearly subscription fee. So if, let's say Hamtramck had one device, they would pay $3,000 per year if they leased that device from us.
Is there, like, do they have to sign a consent form before there's an investigation going on? Like, anyone requested, like, would you take in a, you know?
Are you talking about like the victim of a crime?
Victim of the crime, like, do they have to sign a form to give away their privacy, their rights to get an investigation going on?
No, because basically, we're taking a police report from them. And then using either data that they, and information that they have provided. Maybe it was a red car, maybe they knew part of the license plate, and then we're using, so their information isn't being compromised in any way because it's not part of the data coming off the license plate reader. It's strictly just trying to find a license plate for a vehicle, which we all know is visible to the upper-day public the other day.
Sure. Thank you. I mean, I love to see the community's safety. You know, this is a tool that we can utilize and given the benefit of the doubt, that is going to help the community's safety. So it's pretty good.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay, she introduces us, it's up to us to what we're going to think about it. If you don't find the plate, how are you going to read it? You've got to think about that, too. So, okay.
Mr. Mayor, so.
Yeah, go on.
So Ms. Laura, thank you. I'm really big supporter of the camera system. I've been talking to Chief Mooney and, you know, City Manager previously to have those kinds of systems in place in our city to reduce the crime. And if you reduce the crime, our insurance rate is going to go down. The safer city will pay less money for their insurance. Many people are complaining with our Hamtramck City Insurance at high. I don't know one thing is not matching with you, what you said. I got to use a little Google search. It's a 2,500-four-part camera to install. Or you said 3,000?
Yes, yeah, we just had a price increase. That $2,500 was.
So increase to our city? Start from?
Sadly, we increased on April, on April 1st. Yeah, so we have been the same price since before the pandemic. And due to all of our part costs, we had to increase.
And you have to sign up for seven years, or how does it go?
No, we have, different customers do different things. We have some cities that will do one year. Some cities will do two, or as much as five.
What is your headquarters located at?
Our headquarters is in Atlanta, Georgia.
And you guys 25/7, 24/7 customer service, or?
We are. Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you to give us the presentation. I have a question. Sometimes a fake car dealer plate, are you able to catch those things?
Yes. We, so we catch an image of every vehicle that passes. And so the way that it will work in the system is if it's a temporary tag or a fake plate, it will be indicated as not an actual plate.
And why you keep the record only for one month?
Yeah, so we created that standard as a balance between, like I said, the need to be able to provide investigative data and then not wanting to have so much data that could potentially be misused. And so we tried to create that middle path between some privacy advocates and then public safety advocates.
Thank you very much. I'd like to move forward, I hope.
We're not voting, but this is just. Is it, can it be used to track, you know, speeding cars and reckless drivers, too?
It's not used for traffic enforcement. I will say that we've had some communities where they do have a lot of reckless driving, which is a crime in their community. They can't identify the vehicles that were on the road during that time period, but they have to use that in addition to other data in order to make a case about reckless driving.
All right, thank you. Any more questions?
I've got a quick question, Mayor. Is this tied into lean?
We do not tie directly to lean, no. All of that has to be searched outside of our database. So thank you.
All right, so we'll move to the additions, deletions, agenda approval. And we have Resolution 2023-72 approving termination of contract with Z Part Lawn and Snow, and proposing it to BCL Contractors. So we move it to. This is what we need, yeah. I'll make a motion to add. So we're going to add it to be G, FGH, right?
A, B, C, D, E. No, sorry.
A, B, C, H. A, B, C, S.
Does everyone agree to add a piece?
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
Now we can have a motion to discuss the resolution, please.
I'll make motion to discuss the.
No, 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 accordingly. It's the last one.
It's in the new business now. Okay. All right, so we'll get to it later. But now we have the public comment section.
Ms. Veronica Smith? Hamtramck resident, three minutes.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Veronica Smith. I just come here, you probably seen in your email. I'm also sponsoring June 13, 19th, okay? And with the one that's in, at Sierra Garrett's Park, he's been doing it for three years. So I don't want to take nothing away. This is going to be our first annual, June 19th. And what we want to do is, is a family-friendly community affair. So we want to do a start of Detrus Park, where people can load, it's going to be a picnic, so they can bring their stuff to Detrus Park. And then the plan is to get a bus, get buses, to take them to Sierra Garrett. And then we're going to march from Sierra Garrett down to Joseph Campo, and then break up and end up at the park for the overall affair. So I come to you guys today. The fair is actually donation-driven, okay? So depending on what we get for donations, then that's how we have to know. That's how we have to work. And also let you guys know, when this go off, it's going to be a history-making thing for the city of Hamtramck, okay? And so we need your support so we can make it here. Because it's going to be, it's going to be real, for real. Because we've never seen anything like this in the city of Hamtramck. So most of the council members and administration, I've sent you all emails, even, I've sent all of you. It's called a donor box, you know? And if you can't donate, maybe you can give us some volunteering support or any type of support, you know? Let's just come together as a community, okay? Because I love my city, Hamtramck, and I've been here all my life, pretty much, okay? So let's do this, so let's do it right. Because the lights is going to be on, the city of Hamtramck, on June 19th. I've been asking you guys, okay? So I have some information, I can leave it on the table. And I really appreciate anything you guys can do. Take any kind of contribution, whatever. But one thing I can tell you guys, this is going to happen.
Thank you, Veronica. Thank you.
And thank you guys for listening.
Lynn Blazi?
Hello, Mayor and Council. First, I'd like to congratulate the All-Star Junior Coalition. And the question was already asked. I want to see the video. Super excited about that. So hopefully that gets circulated soon. And regarding the agenda items, Resolution 2023-65, I'm really excited about all the new developments coming to the city. I do have a couple concerns about the Joseph Campo development, that specifically 12 residential units in that specific location. My concerns are around parking. We all know, we've already heard a lot of concerns about parking in that area of Hamtramck with the bike lanes and access to businesses. And I feel like, you know, just figuring out where those 12 potential residents are going to park is something that needs to be considered. And I also am a little bit concerned. I was looking through the site plans, and it says in one spot that the bedroom, all the bedrooms have windows, but the buildings on either side are taller than that building. So I'm curious how, just how those windows work and, you know, the fire safety about that. Again, I'm really excited about this, though. And then regarding Resolutions 2023-66 and 67, the developments on 9509 Gallagher and 9466 McDougal. These are gorgeous. If you haven't seen the plans yet, I think those are really gorgeous. It's my understanding that same developer, same plan for both sites. My concern with that development is a basement apartment in Hamtramck seems fairly ill-advised with the history of flooding in the city. And so I'm just really curious what precautions they're taking against flooding and if they're aware of the history of flooding in Hamtramck. Because I'd hate for someone, you know, for them to develop a gorgeous basement apartment, and then we get a huge storm and it's all underwater, and then the residents are asking for help and have lost everything. And then just a couple more things. Resolution 2023-68, I am in support of the vehicle purchases. It's been discussed at council on a number of occasions, how the fire department needs upgrades to their vehicles and their fleet and everything. And I think this is a really solid step in that direction, to be a fully functioning fire department that serves our community. And then, can I have another minute?
Yeah.
Regarding Resolution 2023-70, I'm really excited that we're bringing youth interns to Hamtramck again, if you guys approve, of course. And I'm curious if there's opportunities for the right student to help with things like, or to learn about grant writing, or to help with the CED, or help with the elections and the clerk's office, and what opportunities there are for youth to really engage in meaningful ways outside of just beautification. Beautification is really important. But I was just curious what other opportunities there are for these young people coming in to get some real-world job experience in our city.
I plan on taking them on board, by the way.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is that Ramis?
I just wanted to add, Lynn, just a response to your, is there other opportunities at City Hall? We're actually partnering with Michigan Works right now. Where Michigan Works is sponsoring youth in our City Hall in pretty much almost every department. So police has signed up for it, third floor, clerk's office, pretty much any department in City Hall is available for that.
Awesome. That's good to know, thank you. I'm Ramis Wadu from ACLU, right?
Yep.
Detroit resident?
Detroit resident.
Three minutes.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Ramis Wadu. I'm an attorney at the ACLU, Michigan, and the American Civil Liberties Union, where our civil rights organization based in Detroit. And our work spans statewide. I'm a Detroit resident, but I consider Hamtramck my second home. My mom has worked in the community for the last 15 or so years, and my mom is back in the community as well. I wanted to come here today to express the ACLU's concerns about the adoption of automated license plate readers. I know today's presentation from Representative from Flock is strictly informational, and so I wanted to join this conversation early to express concerns that have been raised nationwide about the potential impact of license plate readers on the, on privacy and on the civil rights of the residents of Hamtramck. And I'll start with the bottom line, is that adopting a network of cameras around the city of Hamtramck essentially would treat every resident of Hamtramck, every visitor to Hamtramck, as a potential suspect in whatever crimes we investigate, auto theft, rapings, whatever it may be. I understand safety is important, but we must be careful before turning every potential resident, every visitor into a potential suspect. That makes so many people feel much less safe than cameras would make people feel more safe. There are specific issues that have been raised across the country, even in the state of Michigan, regarding data, how long the data is held. Essentially, the representative from Flock said that data would be stored for 30 days, which creates a database of essentially every person passing through the city, every person living in the city, a 30-day-old database of whenever the city police department wants to search a database, they can reach almost every resident and visitor in Hamtramck. Another issue with data sharing, especially in cities with a large immigrant community. We've seen cities propose using the data pulled from license plate readers to share with ICE and with the Border Patrol to help with immigration enforcement. Also, issues with accuracy. Like all technology, this isn't going to be 100% accurate. You're going to capture an image of a license plate in a fat car. You're going to get a letter wrong, a number wrong, and you're going to send the police to have a confrontation with someone who's not an actual suspect in front of them. And so I'll leave it there today, is that this is the beginning of a conversation about the benefits and about the concerns for license plate readers. And it's your responsibility as a partner to consider those concerns. At the very least, implement very strict safeguards as far as how this technology is used, as far as how long the data is stored, and how the data is shared, if at all, with agencies outside of the city. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bill Meyer?
Mr. Meyer's in the house today.
Yeah, ACLU, all right. I'm a member of that group, that's great group. Looking out for people, yes. But I'm not going to talk about that issue. I'll say that to the end, because I assume you haven't changed the rules yet. Then we've got to talk about it. I tend to items at the end, always. So I just want to say I missed my favorite entertainment in Hamtramck for the last few meetings, I'm sorry. But I really appreciate the work you do, and it's always great to see you all. But I've got good news to say, to share. And most of you know, because I sent you an email. But Hamtramck, I read it in several sources, and I get several emails and looked it up, that Hamtramck is the fastest-growing city in Michigan.
Yes, yeah.
That's an amazing thing to think of. What, 1,400 acres of palace? The newest fastest growing? That's a good sign. Also, where the owner-occupied homes have increased 55% in the last five years. And we've always tried to avoid absentee landlords who love to just make money off the buildings and not keep helping ruin the city. But now we have a lot more owner-home builders. So owner-occupied homes. So one of the great ways to track people to the city, which is something that we've never had since I lived there, at least for 20 years more. And I looked through this directory, Hamtramck Directory, and there's no category for it in there, neither one. Why don't we have a hotel or a motel? Why don't we have public housing for people to come in, for guests to come in and stay in town? That's what brings people to the city. You have to have some place to stay when it comes. I know we got bed and breakfast and all that stuff. I mean, what do you call it? But hotels and motels are quickies and a fit. And when you see them, there's a lot of people using them. So we never have. So a reason I bring this up is because my friend Ayad here, I think, is offering a new construction in Hamtramck for the first time that I know of, that it's going to be multiple dwelling, short-term, and it's going to allow guests to come into this town, stay for a short time, and learn about our city. It's a beautiful thing. So I totally support what he's doing, and I'm sure you guys do. So that's pretty much what I'll say right now. But since I have a whole minute left to talk.
Fifty seconds.
Oh, 50 seconds left to talk. But I can ask for another minute if I.
You could.
You know, people are enforcing the garbage cans law now, you know? That's good, because everyone just keeps them out there. But now you have to put them in your yard, and they have to be in there up until the day your garbage can, and then you put them off of the garbage, and then you have to have them out. Just half the houses in my alley there have no way to get these garbage cans into their yard. That's not bad. Their houses like, got this sort of space in the garage. They don't all have gates to get into the yard. Some have their back fence totally closed off. So, I mean, we have to help these people who don't know how to get their garbage cans out of the alley. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Ms. Josephine, Hamtramck resident, three minutes.
I have two minutes. I got a question for you. With me is the problem, because my husband, he got a heart attack a couple times. And then sometime I park in the alley. Like I bring something, you know? I can't come from the outside. And the alley, a couple minutes, I want to take my stuff, you know, put in a car, and they give you ticket right away. It's not right for elderly people. Because I'm not parking to park, I don't have a garage, so I just park like this. And the couple minutes I take my stuff, or like I want to put something, you know? Like I bring the back of the door or something. I can't come from outside, I have to bring from the alley, but they give you ticket right away. So it's not right for the people in Hamtramck. I understand. Alley's supposed to be nice and clean, and we do, I do all the time. And the second thing is meter in Hamtramck, because so many people sometimes stop me and upset, I got a ticket. I put them in the meter, my number, you know, money, 75 cents, not 25, whatever. And then I got a ticket. Like I got a sticker, and then a lot of people, I'm just living here, close to the City Hall, stop me, where's the City Hall? I paid the ticket. Elderly people coming, people, they don't want to come to Hamtramck. You know where they park? They park everywhere in the corner where there's no meter. It's not right for the people, too, because we're losing the people. We don't have no residents coming to Hamtramck because I'm scared, I'm scared to come. They don't want to go to restaurant, they go into restaurant, they park in the corners, and walking, they say, because the parking is very expensive. They should do something, too, for people to bring their people. And the third one is they clean the Joseph Campo. Like I walk sometime, it's so dirty. People who are, you know, working over there, who have businesses, they should keep cleaning and put the flower like before, very nice, and keep all this. And the special, like you say, is that a lot of kids play right here. They play the soccer and everything, the soccer, you know, they go everywhere, and they're going, you know? And then they want to hit them, the spitting is so bad for them. Sometime I just say, I hope they get a kill, and they close to police. So this is my point, and this is my problem. So I would like to, you know, especially in the alley with this, don't get a ticket, because it's very expensive. And then I don't want to, you know, like, I can bring nothing. Outside, you know, they take a couple minutes to unpark and park, and they leave. So this is my big problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would recommend that you connect with the city manager to discuss those issues. Maybe there's a way to help you. And I wish we can solve the parking meter issue, but it wasn't us who brought it here.
I know, I understand. Yeah, a lot of people come and.
Thank you.
Couple African-Americans, they come and ask me, what is the, elderly people, what is the ticket? I got a ticket.
All right, thank you. So communicate with Max, hopefully he can help you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments?
No, sir, that's a Republican.
All right, so we'll move to the consent agenda. And this is approved in a single motion with no discussion. We have A, approval of minutes from the May 9, 2022? It's written 22, I assume that's the typo, right? Supposed to be 2023.
Yes.
Regular City Council meeting. B, approval of envoys registered date ending May 23, 2023. C, approval of pre-approved expenditure date ending May 19, 2023. And D, 2023-64 approving appointment to boards and commissions. Make a motions?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so the appointee to the board, Mr. Khalid Kusemi. You want to maybe take the oath? Good evening. Do you want to tell us about yourself a little bit?
Khalid Kusemi, I've been living in Garrett for almost 33 years.
That's enough.
Thanks enough.
33 is a long time, I think. 33 is a long time.
All right, so you're going to take the oath, she's going to walk you through.
I state your name.
I, Khalid Kusemi.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States of America.
Support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And that I'll faithfully discharge.
And I faithfully discharge.
The duties of.
The duties of.
The zoning Board of Appeals.
Zoning Board of Appeals.
Of the City of Hamtramck.
The City of Hamtramck.
According to the Best of My Building. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations. All right. So move now to the new businesses. We have Resolution 2023-65, conditional approval of site plan of 8902 Joseph Campo.
Oh, for a second.
Mr. Mayor, we have this block there from our CED, and we also have our developer and his contractor here.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
I just want to talk about the site plan for eight nine oh two Joseph Campo. Um, I'll say a little bit, and then you can share a little bit about the project as well. Um, so it's located on Joseph Campo between Roosevelt and Goodson. Originally, the applicant proposed six units back in two thousand twenty, which was approved. Um, but now the site plan is proposing a twelve-unit residential structure plus two commercial units. And so that's why we have come back to the site plan process. Um, it is in a central business district. There are no parking requirements for any uses in, for the central business district at any time. That's part of our zoning ordinance. Um, mixed use, commercial and residential uses are permitted by right in a central business district. Um, we've had a few reviews of this plan already, and those are all attached in BSNA. Um, the staff does recommend conditional approval. Conditional approval means they need to submit a few more things, and it will be approved. So you're approving it sort of in advance of those six conditions. Those would be that HVAC and equipment appliances must be screened. The rear facade, which is concrete block, would need to be painted. Proposed lighting would need to be provided. Um, so lighting should be shielded downward, for example, not shining out. Um, details regarding trash management need to be provided. Um, any pavement that's adjacent that's in poor condition, or, you know, just from this process, needs to be repaired. Um, and any permits, I'm sorry, any work done in the right-of-way Wayne County, they would need to get a permit for that. So again, as a staff, we are proposing that you approve it conditionally based on those six conditions, and I'll give the floor to you.
All right.
Yeah, I don't have anything to add, like new. That business was an empty lot for a long time, and Mr. Ed has turned it into a business. Help visitors to come in Hamtramck and have a short time, uh, run to, instead of, you know, have a whole house or. We don't have anything that is similar to what he did here that I've known. So, um, that's, that's it. And all these six requirements, uh, things that we have already, um, did, and if there's anything that's not there, we will fix it.
Okay. I said. Is it a motel? Well, I, I know brother, Antari is a good builder and he's a good investor. Uh, we appreciate you putting this effort to this, you know, we needed that. Thank you. All right.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, I think we all said for the, we can go the discussion, right?
Yeah.
So, I think we all said for the, the discussion is here. Uh, I'd like to congressulate, uh, Mr.
Yeah.
Ayar. And also Hamtramck City Administration, and especially you, what you said today. With, with the condition of the six item, it's very clear you did your job. Okay, so that kinds of director or employee we need, and to help the investor, help the residents. The gentleman expending money, and, uh, and the developer also said, that kinds of design we don't have around Hamtramck. It's very important we need. We need more building like what you're doing. Because there's more people try to come from other state of United States in Michigan, Hamtramck. So we have to provide them houses, apartment, and everything. So like three weeks ago, suddenly, I was testing my Uber account is good or bad. So suddenly, I got a call. Okay, let me see. And I found, I was in around the grass point area, just wanted coffee and things, and came to the, like, bringing me to the Hamtramck. What's going on? Okay, okay, so, and I, I think Sumar is the one messing with me. That's why I feel. And exactly came to the street, Arabic, more Arabic B or something, like a, from the Ohio, Tennessee, couple of graduate, bachelor students came in Hamtramck. Enjoyed the Detroit Hamtramck area, there took the house in Hamtramck for a couple of days. And I was with them enjoying, because all bachelor engineers and other degree holder. And I, I feel proud of it as a Hamtramck residence. And I did give them a lot of service, helped them take the Yemen cafe, take to the, I think that time owner was there. And take to the main street, you know, I feel very good about it. So that kinds of building, if we have in Hamtramck, more people will come, more people expend the money, and had, that did all the expense in the local restaurant, gas station, and the bar. Okay, so there's the Hamtramck revenue. Second thing, there is the building bigger than your one, don't have any parking anyway, is the residential area, not even commercial, uh, section. So, um, I don't want to waste my time and everybody's time. It is very good idea, I want to, developer also, please find out some more to make us some more bigger house, because fire department, we have, we have the, a strong support, you know, for that kinds of building. Thank you.
All right. So it's, uh, in the summertime, we, we have so many events in Hamtramck, like weddings, and so many people comes from other state for a short-term stay. And they always wants place for short-term stay. So many of them are relatives to the people who are celebrating the weddings here and stuff. So that's why we need more, um, you know, Airbnb or hotels or motels, whatever. If there is a big investor to, to turn the jail into a hotel, that would be perfect. And a housing complex next to it. It's a fourteen-point-seven acre, and we are looking for investors. You know, I wish it could be residential other than, better than industrial.
Need a big parking lot.
It has a lot of. So, uh, yeah, thank you. Uh, any more discussion?
Mr. Mayor, just to clear myself, is it Airbnb apartment or motel? Airbnb. Thank you.
All right, we can go ahead and vote.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Hassan.
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri.
Uh, yes.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes.
Councilman Chadri.
Yes.
Councilman Musa.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution two thousand three sixty-five approved.
All right.
But before we go to the next one. I have two email comments to read. They're not about the agenda. I can save them to the end if you're okay. If they're not regarding agenda, I can read them at the end, or I can read them now?
Uh, maybe.
Yeah, we'd like to suspend the rules.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. They're not anything about the agenda or anything with this person, so I can save them to the end. Okay. Thank you.
No problem. So you're gonna read them now?
Oh, you want me to read them?
I mean, we suspend the.
We have to suspend the law.
Yeah, that's what.
So I like to suspend the law.
Okay. All right, I guess I'll read them now then.
Okay.
Uh, this one is from Philip Quick. Uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna time myself, because they are long emails, and I'm gonna, okay, four minutes max, okay?
Well, you have to get in one minute.
No, I'm starting. Hold on, I gotta reset. Bill got his timer going too. To the mayor and city council members, I want to thank the City of Hamtramck's community and economic development department, the Greening of Detroit, the GM cares, and many dozens of volunteers who planted trees in Monken in Fleming on May eighteenth and nineteenth. The trees look healthy and the blocks look great. The volunteers cleaned up after themselves, leaving the area in better shape than they found it. Urban trees are so important for the city like, for a city like Hamtramck, which has concrete as far as the eye can see. Trees help lower energy costs by keeping our houses cooler in the summer. Their shade lowers air temperature, making our city friendlier and more walkable. They help abate noise pollution and add value to everyone's property. And perhaps most important, trees help mitigate, uh, the negative effects of storms, improve water runoff, directing floodwater away from all of our basements. Twenty-seven years ago, in the years after a tornado hit Hamtramck in nineteen ninety-six, the Hamtramck volunteer group preserved our parks, preserved our parks, and the Greening of Detroit planted one thousand trees throughout the community. Unfortunately, urban environments are tough on trees. Cars and exhaust pollution and salt from winter roadways take their toll. Approximately forty percent of those trees planted in nineteen ninety's remain. This is why it is important for Hamtramck to commit to a regular program of planting and maintaining a tree canopy. Trees, parks, and green spaces, and recreational facilities, and bike paths contribute to the quality of life in Hamtramck. These are the projects that our residents need so that the city continues to grow and prosper. Once again, thank you to the city and all the volunteers who work so hard to improve the quality of our life here in our community. Best, Philip Quick. Not bad. Minute and a half. Next one. Uh, this one is Kelly Foreman. Dear Rana, I am Hamtramck resident homeowner, and I have friends who have been ticketed for having their trash bins in the alley, and they must, and that they not, and that they must not be open in any way. I request that city council revisit code enforcement and to change this, or at least stop enforcing it for the following reasons. One, rotting trash and the vermin who visit the bins are a threat to public health and should be cut in the alleys, not in the yards where children are playing and where the smell in the summer months make it impossible to enjoy time in the backyards. Large families with little kids are especially problematic. The combined smell of a week's worth of diapers combined with rotting food in ninety-degree heat is beyond description. It, number two, it isn't easy for residents to drag these heavy bins in and out of the yard every single week. They are quite heavy when full, and elderly or weak residents face serious challenges doing this, especially in the winter months. It also creates unnecessary wear and tear on the wheels, leaving them tiddly next to the fences in the alleys. Is the, is the logical place tidily next to the fences in the alleys is the logical place for them to be. What possible, number three, what possible use are you saving the alleys for? If not for trash, alleys aren't used by emergency vehicles, just by trash collection, and residents who drive down them to park in their garages. Our yards are tiny, we don't have room for trash to be stored on the property, and having it close to where we are living possesses health issues, poses health issues. Number four, it is impossible not to overfill the bins such that the lids are not fully closed, and this is because families are large in Hamtramck, and trash very quickly fills up the bins by midweek. It is reasonable to expect that trash be in the bins and overflow in strong tide of trash bags, but it is not reasonable to expect larger families to somehow deposit their trash elsewhere. If this requirement is enforced, then Hamtramck needs to consider twice-weekly pickup so that large amounts of trash is managed. And with home delivery now common, as in Amazon, Walmart, or Kroger, the additional boxes and packaging creates more trash than what was the case a decade ago. I think that the city is prioritizing the wrong things at the moment and could focus on rental properties with serious structural problems and yards full of trash, or on businesses whose overflow dumpsters attract rats. Rather than forcing residents to stay inside all summer in order to avoid the smell of the trash close to their living spaces. Code enforcement should focus on properties where trash is spread all over the place, including the alley, but to leave alone the bins in the alleys and to expect them to be over, to be overfull unless twice-weekly collection is started. Again, that is from Kelly Foreman. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that is all.
Thank you. And for those people who care about the plant, about planted trees, we, we had a meeting with an organization who is applying for a grant to plant like thousands of trees in Hamtramck. Hopefully, they, they will succeed in that, and two million?
Two, two grants currently.
Two grants. So, yeah, that would make the city look much better.
And then can I also state, if the family has too much garbage, you can always order an extra garbage can for excess garbage. You don't have to just stick to the one garbage can.
Okay. Actually, since our clerk opened the door. Um, yeah, she's a hundred percent right, anyone can buy a second can. Um, the whole point of it being in the yard, or the garage for that matter, is that you are forced to keep it clean. If the garbage is in the can and the lid's closed, it doesn't smell. My garbage is in my garage, it's been in there for twenty years, I didn't have this issue at all. When it's left in the alley, people neglect them, they get dirty, they don't care, that's the whole point, they just throw it out there, it gets disgusting. If you're forced to take care of it, you're forced to take care of it.
And actually, some, some neighbors will drop stuff in your trash can if you leave it in the alley.
They go through and tear through them.
Right. All right, thank you so much. So, uh, well, finished one, congratulation Ayad on approving the site. The next one is our resolution two thousand twenty-three dash sixty-six, approval of site plan for nine five zero nine Gallagher.
I offer.
Second.
Again, she's up to bat and the next two, and we also have the developer here next to you.
All right, thank you. Uh, before we proceed, I caught an error in the resolution. It, it still mentioned Ayad's name in there. Did you see that?
No, hold on, let me open that.
It says the applicant, Michael, was that, but then.
Okay.
We will, we can fix.
So we can fix that.
Thank you.
Hi, sorry, go ahead.
Okay, go.
Okay. Hi, I'm here to talk about, uh, this four-unit apartment building. This is actually for one of the lots that the city has already sold through the residential lot sale program. Um, this is the developer, he can answer, um, questions, um, I can answer some questions as well. Um, so this one that we're talking about right now is nine five oh nine Gallagher Street. Um, the proposal is four units of housing. Um, with people moving in, there's definitely a demand for housing, um, as someone spoke about earlier. Um, there would be three parking spaces, and in order to meet the landscape ordinance, because we have a required minimum amount of landscaping in the residential zone. Um, staff, um, proposed or, or asked the applicant to figure out some sort of way that the parking spaces could also be green space at the same time. And could double as permeable and green, and at the same time provide free parking spaces. So, um, they included, um, what the proposed materials are. Um, those are designed to infiltrate stormwater runoff, and, um, basically, they, like the last one, this would actually be conditional, I don't know if we can modify that as well, because there are four conditions, um, and just the agenda didn't say conditional approval. So the four conditions for approval would be that we need a few more specific material designations.
It is on the resolution.
Oh, it is, okay, I apologize.
No problem.
Um, more details on the lighting would need to be provided. Um, an ornamental fence, um, to manage and trash, uh, to manage and screen the trash is recommended. And of course, this still needs to go through other departments as well, like the building department. So that is it for my presentation, and the next one will be very similar as well. If you want to say a few words?
Yeah, we're building two houses, another property that we're proposing is for my son, it's on McDougall, very similar. I mean, we're doing permeable parking, which, I mean, we'll take care of all the water, will drain through it. I don't know if you brought the pictures that I printed, but.
I can pull some of that. Yeah, they're on, they're online if we want to.
No issue.
City council, if you have any questions, I, I don't know where to start itself. So this is the permeable product. I mean, semi trucks can drive, or even semi trucks can drive over this.
Works in Clements.
And you can also pull up, uh, if you want the site plan, or if council wants, but do you guys have any questions for us?
No.
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, we'll do the same on the same.
All right. Any discussion?
No discussion. Neither government is good for us.
Okay.
Can go ahead and vote, yes.
Councilman Musa.
Yes.
Councilman Chadri.
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri.
Uh, yes.
Councilman Hassan.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, resolution two thousand three sixty-six approved.
Thank you, and congratulations. We move to the next one, which is our resolution two thousand twenty-three dash sixty-seven, approval of site plan for nine four six six McDougall.
Offer.
Second.
This is essentially the same building on a different lot, um, I don't think I need to repeat.
Same, same thing. Yeah, but it's still same.
Same building, uh, different address.
It is a commercial area or residential?
Residential.
Residential.
Building will be sprinkled also.
How many parking spot?
Three.
Three parking spots off of the alley. We're in the back.
And it is a, um, one for.
Four units.
Four in, then you have a three-party space?
Yeah, there is no possible way to have fourth parking spot. Dimensionally, it's impossible.
Helicopter, because it's a flat.
Right, you don't mind the helicopter.
Something is better than nothing.
Yeah, always better.
Thank you. Yeah, all right, thank you.
More questions for us?
No.
Well, thank you.
Councilman El Samiri.
Uh, yes.
Councilman Chadri.
Yes.
Councilman Musa.
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes.
Councilman Hassan.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution two thousand three sixty-seven approved.
Thank you. And this is why they wrote an article about Hamtramck, that it's the fastest-growing city in Michigan. They said population and business growth, so.
Council approved faster than resolution.
So, uh, the next one is resolution two thousand twenty-three dash sixty-eight, approving the purchase of two vehicles for the fire department. I'll make an offer. Just a second.
Mr. Mayor, we have our fire chief here today on this.
Good evening, Gil.
No?
Oh, yes, this is just to purchase, uh, two vehicles to replace the fire marshal's vehicle and the fire chief's vehicle. As a little bit of background, I've been on the job for twenty-five and a half years. This is the second chief's vehicle we've had with the department. So we've gotten our money out of, we've got our mileage out of it, it's time to replace him, so.
We've had enough of a fire marshal breaking down.
Yes.
You kind of needed to get Tori's going.
Uh, so we went through, uh, through my deal, we got a good price on these out of, uh, Berger Chevrolet, it's the same dealership that the police use to buy or purchase their tow hoes. So we're just looking for approval to purchase, and then we have the cost for the vehicles, plus the, the cost to equip them with lights, sirens, and radios.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
How old are your current vehicle?
Current vehicle's in twenty, two thousand ten, they're both two thousand ten Explorers.
Forty years old, okay.
So are you selling them, or what are you doing with them?
Uh, the, the fire marshal's vehicle, I believe we're gonna send over for the traffic enforcement, or, uh, parking enforcement.
It breaks down in the city, we're okay.
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 And then, uh, uh, the vehicle that I currently have, we're gonna keep with the fire department right now as a utility vehicle, and then it can always be shifted over anywhere in the city as needed.
If we expect a long life on this.
I mean, if your money go for it, it's good to have some new, in equipment, it was modernized stuff to our city.
So this will, um, impact the budget, right? We have to, the budget is adjustment.
Yeah, it's been.
It's in the budget.
I don't guys here.
It was budgeted for next year in July, but the vehicle is available right now. So I told the chief to go ahead and get it, because next year it will. Yeah. And we will, what we do is when we do the fourth quarter amendment in the budget, we move the budget from next year, this year, and next year's budget, you know, would be reduced to point in the first quarter.
Same stance that we've taken with the other department heads. We're trying to get it when we can, because at least there are.
Yeah, I know. We talked about it a few months, couple of months back about it, you know. You had a very old truck.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
Then we can request new car for the mayor too?
You got a good deal on a point that's.
We get a modernized room for council.
By the way, last week.
If we get through this my deal, you won't get it for private vehicles, so.
My one of the employee telling me, his son-in-law, last week he surrendered in one firefighter officer. His son-in-law working, I don't know what his name.
Yeah, they just hired the new one.
Yeah, we just, we just, we just wore them two weeks ago.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, let's vote. Okay, let's vote.
Vote?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Approved.
Councilman Musa?
Yes, good luck.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution twenty-three sixty-eight approved.
All right. Of the last long.
Next one is Resolution 2023 dash sixty-nine, approving request to change dental providers.
Offer second.
Mr. Mayor, we do have the HR director here today, but I probably spearhead this one. It's a slight savings to the city, but the big part is we're trying to consolidate. We have the, this current provider, the standard, that we're trying to switch to for other, other insurances in the city. I believe it's Orkman's account and a few others. And rather than having one-off, we have dental. The slight savings of consolidation, we just decided to move.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Looks like you're changing the only, the company. Four hundred seventy-seven dollar is not the one, but if it is good for the employee, we are okay. It's the employee.
Less bill, it's, the coverage is the same. It's less bills to pay. I mean, it's just more of a convenience.
No problem.
Vote. Yes.
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-three sixty-nine approved.
Thank you. Next one is Resolution 2023 dash seventy, approving acceptance of DWIHN grant for summer youth program.
I'll make an offer.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, this is the yearly grant we get from Detroit Wayne Integrated Health. It's for the youth program. The only difference really this year is we get more money. Last year was thirty-five thousand. This year they've increased it to fifty. We're trying to get ahead of it, because generally speaking, this one comes together so fast, we're always struggling to get it done. And we've brought it to as fast as we could, so that we're headed the ball for the summer.
All right.
How do people sign up for this?
There will be actually postings for it, and we will be advertising. And also, if you know any youth that are interested, send them our way.
Sure.
Next, postings will be on the website tomorrow.
Yeah.
I've got the cover.
All right, let's vote.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution twenty-three seventy approved.
Thank you. Next one is Resolution 2023 dash seventy-one, approving purchase of PF fixed asset module for the PSNA software.
I'll make an offer.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, I have our controller here today. Amir to take this one. He convinced me that it was necessary. He's got a good sales pitch.
Okay.
So this is a software portion of your overall finance, you know, accounting software. And I was shocked to find out that the city doesn't have one. Because basically, what we're doing is all the fixed assets that we have in the city, we're not accounting for it properly. All we are doing is, in order to close the accounts every year, we do a manual accountability of it, do some manual general entries. But there's no way to track on any of our assets. And this is something that we should have had along here when we got the main software. So I tried to find out why we don't have it. I just couldn't figure, get any answer of why we don't have it. But this is something that is an essential part of any accounting software, any financial software. This will give us a chance to manage our, you know, expanding fixed asset infrastructure, including fixed assets and mobile assets, like the cars and, you know, computers, laptops. Right now, we have no way to control any of these assets. So that's the reason, you know, I would strongly recommend that we purchase this and we start using it to properly account for everything in the city.
So it seems like it will cost seventeen thousand and then twenty-four hundred annually?
Right.
Service fee.
Right.
The twenty-four seventy is annual service fee.
Yeah, that's.
Thereafter one year.
Right.
It would also square us away and also make our audits every year.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So, Mr. Manager, how you get the compromise with the CFO to have this one?
He convinced me. He didn't understand why we, why we didn't have the software prior. I think he's bringing his corporate world experience to us and kind of made me feel dumb that we didn't have it.
Okay, so you're the money man. You think it work. It's no problem.
One surprise is not there, and the auditors have not made it an issue.
Like, we don't need it. That's why we don't have it.
That's, that's, that's what surprised me.
Sometimes we don't know until we know.
We know.
You know, Amir brings a wealth of outside knowledge from the corporate world to us that frankly, city government probably didn't know about.
Sure. Yeah, sometime, you know, the software makes the job so much enhanced and smoother. These days, the technology is available, or we should be utilizing it, you know. And this is what he's recommending. That's what will give him a day-to-day smooth works.
I think more importantly, what it does is it gives us a control over counting of all our assets.
Yes.
So right now, if somebody asks me, how many computers do you have? I have no idea. Where do you have? I have no idea. Which department? Each and every department might be keeping track of their own assets, but there's no central tracking mechanism for this. And this is what surprised me, that we don't have something like this.
All right, let's vote on. All right, sir. Sound good?
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution twenty-three seventy-one approved.
Thank you. And now the added resolution H. Resolution 2023 dash seventy-two, approving termination of contract with X Park Lawn and Snow, and proposing it to BCL contractors.
Offer second.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have some pictures. I have two sets, so I'm gonna split them between you guys here. Look at them. In short, basically, last year, we bid this out, and we had a number of contractors bid for it. We ended up taking the lowest bidder, which is not necessarily always the best for our city. We went with it. We gave it a try, and frankly, it just did not work out. The expectation was to get our city to look a lot better when we did this, and in my opinion, it looks worse. The recommendation is to terminate the current contract we have and move on to the second bidder, which was our original recommendation. We have experience with that contractor in the past. They did a fine job. They were very reliable. When we did do this bid process last time around, our, our requirements were very clear that we were looking to improve the service to the city and that we wanted the city properties to look park-like. We want things to be edged, weed-whipped, and, and look better than they ever have. And frankly, in my opinion, we can't expect our residents to do it. The city's not doing it either. The follow-up and pictures we've taken of the current contractor are completely unacceptable. It is my recommendation to immediately terminate and go with the second, the second bidder.
Just so you know, the contract is, you can terminate it anytime. So if we have another problem, terminate it. We're not gonna have to pay any penalty. They're locked into the rate for two years, or for three years, and then we can renew it again for another two. But again, there's no penalty for terminating it. So if they're not up to the standard that we provided in the contract or that we think that they should be doing, we can just fire them and go to the next one or rebid it, however we like it.
Our intent is to hold our contractors accountable. The city can't try, pays a lot of money for our contractors, and we expect good service.
Yeah, this one, I don't have any trimming at all. All the street, I just see the pictures. I mean.
We're trying to fix this. We're, we're trying to change the.
How much more money you could pay?
It's about ten thousand more than the other one was a year. But I believe the service is gonna be ten thousand. It's good, in my opinion.
Okay.
There's a doubt that there were numerous attempts at fixing and correcting what's been done. It wasn't just a.
Mr. Manager, how much will be there to the contract cost yearly?
Around sixty-eight thousand.
Sixty-four.
Yeah, we, we attempted to hold the current contractor's feet to the fire on this. There were several weeks of expectations that we've given them. Frankly, they're just not pulling their weight, and we're wasting, we're wasting too much time ensuring that they're supposed to do what they're doing, and they're still not doing that.
Do you have any referral for him, or he did any previous job, any other cities?
The one we're switching to now was actually our former contractor, who did a really wonderful job for us. The only difference is that when he bid it this time, we made it clear that we wanted the service to be even better. Previously, it was bid to a certain standard that was presented to him years ago, and he met that standard and actually went above and beyond many, many times along the way for us. I remember countless times where we asked him, hey, can you pay extra attention to this part or this part for this? We have an event coming here, or can you do this today? And that contractor did indeed always do that. Now, with the, the new added contract and the clear direction from us and what we expect, I fully anticipate that quality of service to increase even more. He's been put on notice that if this honorable body approves this today, that we expect crisp edging, weed-whipping, the whole nine yards. We want it to look park-like.
So you, you said sixty-eight thousand?
Yes, sir.
Why is it saying here fifty-two thousand?
The old one.
No, no, no. The last year, we chose the new company because they offered forty-two thousand, and this was fifty-two thousand.
Yeah.
And the reason we actually supported the new, because when I asked Kathy, why, why choosing the higher bid, her answer was because we know these people. It wasn't a reasonable answer to us. We didn't know what this company is gonna do. I mean, we didn't know if they are as good, or better, or worse, until we tried them. But the answer was really unprofessional, like just because we know them, we choose their bid, even if it's higher. So that, that was the reason. It's not like we knew this new company that it would be better.
A hundred percent fair. I mean, we, we gave them a solid chance at it. Our hope was to improve services. Unfortunately, they didn't live up to our expectations.
So, so what, it's, it's saying here fifty-two thousand. Why?
So I'm looking at the, the attached bid prices.
I recall, I believe, I recall, we can always go back on the tape and watch. But I do recall also that there was a discussion about when we have storms and trees fall, and they always show up in, in emergencies. I remember the conversation. But I believe that BCL did drop their cost when they knew that there was gonna be an issue. I believe that they did drop their cost from the original bid to be a little bit more in competition with the ten thousand dollars.
No, I remember very well that the difference was ten thousand.
Yeah, between forty-two, between forty-two.
I'm referencing the business.
So if you're gonna approve it, approve it at the fifty-two?
Yes.
And if it's not, if they don't agree to it, then.
Then we'll look for someone else.
Yeah, it's here, the resolution, fifty-two thousand, so.
Oh, resolution.
It's.
Yeah, they dropped it from the.
But why is it sixteen?
Mr. Chair?
So, yeah, fifty-two thousand, give it another try and see. They do well. I mean, continue with them. If not, we'll look for someone else. Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So the, my question, I told you and Mr. Manager already clarified. If we fire somebody, we don't have to, you know, pay anything, but no lawsuit, anything's.
For any reason whatsoever, at any time whatsoever. If we just get sick of them, it doesn't matter.
So we already let them know they're not doing the good job and.
Oh, yeah. They have had ample notice, councilmen, this time. And our city attorney also reviewed this contract. I reviewed it, then I had our city attorney review it just to make sure everything was above board, that we can terminate this. We, our belief is a hundred percent that there is no issue with that. We've given them weeks of opportunity to bring their stuff up to par. We've taken photo evidence. We've presented them photo evidence. We went back out and checked it. There is no doubt in my mind, they are not going to get to where they're supposed to be.
Yeah, I don't wanna, next year, this time, John come, this one not doing good, I gotta get another one. So.
Yes.
And same thing I wanna say to the CFO, that contact, ah, this guy not doing, I need another contact to there. So we don't want that kinds of things, you know, again and again.
We're gonna hold them to the fire. I mean, if, if they're not meeting our expectations, they're gone. I think we, we, we don't, we can't expect our residents to keep their stuff crisp if their contractors aren't doing it.
Off the record, we sell everything to somebody else here. He's gonna provide all the service without money, maybe. Who knows?
All right, let's vote, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution twenty-three seventy-two approved.
Thank you. All right, so we move to the reports, and I'll start with the mayor's report. As usual, we mentioned the activities that we have been doing over the past two weeks, which I forgot half of them, because there's so many. We had the honor to join LendPazza on opening, you know, grand opening of the area disaster recovery last Friday. It was a good event. I didn't see any of the city council members there. But it's okay. It was too early.
You're not paying us a lot of money.
That was ten o'clock. And, yeah, that was one of the events I attended. There was another event that me and the city manager were at, but it's confidential. I can't mention it.
It is confidential.
Couple of you missed it too. They were supposed to be there.
Yes.
Okay. And then now, I had the, I participated in the two big events celebrating the thirty-three anniversary of the AMNI reunion. One was in Dearborn, and another one, the next day, was in Hamtramck. Just different groups organized the same event, so, in two different days. That, and that event, I saw Mayor Protem there, and, and Mr. Samiri was there too. Chowdhury called me, you know, wondering why he wasn't invited. I wasn't the one organizing the event. I was a guest, you know. So those are the, some of the events I attended last week, and visited some schools here and there. That's it for my report. We'll move to the Mayor Protem report.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
So I was there with you, United PMN. Nobody invited me, actually.
Yeah, right. How did you know?
It's funny of why.
Your buddy, Councilman Sumari called you up?
So I was going to Canton by the goat. I was almost there, So I was going to Canton by the goat. I was almost there, and I saw the light, Adnan Gova, and he's there, so I'm very close to there. So I was actually earlier, two hours earlier than the event. Then I'm alone. I need a coffee shop, and I called Sumari, "Are you coming, Mister Councilman? I cannot go to the coffee shop alone", so I go to the coffee shop back and forth, waiting for Mayor and everybody to come. So, so this is the one I did it. And second one, of course, we invite you, Mister Councilman, uh, the, uh, what am I, Gate of Columbus, we call you. So that one, we had it, uh, we go there, uh, which, that's all. And second, uh, the camera thing, we have to worry, previous practice, DDA, we had a push button to flash the light and, and to control the traffic. Nobody used that. We spent sixty thousand dollar around, uh, also camera, and it was, it did not work very good. We have to replace it, like a, like a park meter right now. We was, the previous council member was thinking, it was the good idea. Right now, reality is here, people complaining about that one. So we have to worry about that, uh, camera thing. We introduced today, uh, that one. I just want you guys to look at that. And also, uh, register, uh, uh, the consent agenda, register things. In voice register, I'm requesting some, most of the council member, uh, look at that one. Uh, previous practice, we had a one time pass the resolution, over ten thousand dollar, uh, without our permission, uh, nobody can expand it. So just wanna give you a little, um, history of the what we had been, there was the reason why not. So, and everything else, right now, city is moving right direction. And other thing, um, nothing personal, Mister Councilman Chowdhury, uh, we have to practice our, uh, fairness. Uh, anything as a council member, uh, I'm the candidate, I cannot, uh, invite anybody, say anything, and when I was, I'm sitting around here. It's not the good practice. We can do the outside and, or, or get out from the council, we can do it. If one, uh, person do it and some other person, and we don't wanna that kinds of practice, uh, it was not previous day also here. So that is the good thing, uh, I have to say, and all the, everybody doing good job. City moving forward. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Mister Mayor Putam. By the way, that's a good advice to read the, you know, the invoices and the stuff before the meeting. That was brought up because I keep calling them to discuss that, so.
You can take credit.
Thank you.
It's my fault too. I'm the senior. I should read it because I'm very busy.
Well, he's the most senior, so sometimes I ask him about this.
I'm busy, 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 working, working, you know, so I'm sorry.
Thank you. Uh, city council reports.
I'm Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilman.
We had a, a event last Sunday, one of very delightful guy coming from Bangladesh. He actually, we tried to, uh, recognition him. He should be here anytime. He was in, out of state, he's coming now again. So this guy actually, uh, big time helping the public education in Bangladesh, and he's the father of the mobile banking technology in our country. All the, um, ATM booth in our country beginning from his hand. He's a really educated guy, and I'm really humble and honor him to visit our country, our city. And maybe he should be coming up before the meeting ended. If he's coming, so we can introduce him. And, uh, my second, uh, second thing, so sorry, I missed the two other event, in Dearborn and Hamtramck.
There are more.
Sorry, my colleague, he called me half hour before. I just getting the, my job. I said, "Man, if you told me before, at least I can manage it." I hope in future, we can cooperate each other, and I do not wanna miss it again. Thank you very much.
No problem. And, and you reminded me to, to events that I, I met two officials from Bangladesh in the past two weeks. We honored one from the opposition, then the next day, we honored someone from the rolling park, so, so they don't get mad.
Balance it out.
Actually, I came at nine o'clock to the city hall to give a certificate to someone. Um, alright, next one.
I don't have anything much. Uh, thank you, everyone. Uh, we went to MML training. That was really great, uh, learning process. Uh, a lot of good things to learn. Thank you, Councilman, and I'm to make, encourage me to sign up for it. Uh, even though I lose my Friday income, but that was good to know, a lot of good things, so. Uh, this was part of the reason I missed couple of the event on the weekend, wasn't able to attend. Uh, thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
Thank you. Councilman Chowdhury.
Well, uh, I didn't know I couldn't invite people to my personal party, you know, that's just, uh.
But the city council chairman.
But it's part of the, I understand.
The chairman.
I see. Okay, so anyway, uh, as you heard from Councilman Mohit Mahmood, that we were, uh, at MML training over the weekend, so Friday, we had to go, so that's why we missed that, uh, grand opening. And we came back Saturday evening, uh, late evening, and we were tired, and, um, that's why some of the stuff we missed over the weekend. However, um, we learned a, a lot of things from the experienced, uh, MML trainers. You know, they talk about the local cities exclusively, uh, new, uh, we, new, new council members and advanced classes. Uh, and lots of grants are out there, you know, they talk about how do you apply for grants and how to get hands-on things. So, um, I know, uh, I cannot discount everything here, but I will be convey this to our city manager, and you guys are already working on those things. Uh, as I have, uh, other things, heat is rising, so stay cool, stay inside, and we are planting more trees, so it will give us a chance and air. As, I love trees. Uh, I participated many times, uh, tree planting, and that's all I want to say, and. Everybody be safe and stay cool. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Any, anyone else you wanna say that?
No.
Alright, thank you. So, next one is, uh, do we have anything for the chief financial officer?
Mayor, anything?
You have anything? No.
Report.
Alright, thank you. So the city manager report, please.
Uh, not the lecture this time, Mayor. I covered mostly the announcements throughout the meeting.
Okay, good. So we move then to the public comment again.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Lind Lavi.
Save the box for us.
He insists.
Hi, Mayor and Council. I'll keep this quick. Um, I just wanna give, uh, congratulations to Collet, um, and to say that I appreciate his willingness to serve the community and his retirement. Um, looking at his application, he has a wealth of experience and variety of, um, different types of work that I think will be really relevant to his position on the ZVA. So I just wanna congratulate him, and then I also, um, wanted to comment that, um, getting the BSNA, uh, software, uh, I think is really a good move. I think that will really increase efficiency. Um, I've worked in environments where we don't have just like a simple tool like tracking software to make everybody's job easier. So I think that'll increase efficiency across departments and for city hall as a whole, and, um, every year when departments are putting together those reports, they don't have to spend so much time tracking everything down and, you know, put, working independently of each other. So I think it'll also work for cohesion within city hall, so, um, just wanted to comment on those and happy Memorial Day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Rum roll, Mister Bill Meyer.
I'm the chair.
So Rex, you said, uh.
Not that.
You've kept your garbage in your garage for twenty years?
Throw it out.
He said, "Come on, come on."
It, it turns over.
Okay, I have, remember that, okay. So you know what today felt like, was like a, uh, sort of like a courtroom, but sort of like a sales room, a sales pitch. Everyone was selling things, and you guys bought a lot of stuff today, man. You just spent, you're happy spending money. It's, uh, nobody challenged anything, nobody asked any critical questions about anything they were selling. You just, you bought it. Thank you for the ACLU guy showed up and at least presenting another side of the story about cameras, security cameras, people who are concerned about privacy and other issues like that. I, I, people come up here to sell things, and no disrespect to the young lady who's selling, she's working for a company, she wants to sell things and make money. That's her job. She has no investment in him, trans personally. You represent the people here. Is this good for the people or isn't it? And you don't have any idea because you didn't even question what these cameras are, and you did not research it at all, I could tell. By the way, you just loved what she said, just like the people who sold us the parking meters four years ago. That's all like a great idea, man. We don't have to do anything. Let's, let them put the meters there, and then, look what happened.
We've all asked questions. We've all asked questions. We're not, we didn't voted for it.
Okay, don't take my time.
Well, may, we add in a minute.
It's not given.
No.
Alright, yeah, so I, no, you, you did a little bit, but not enough. I mean, this is, uh, this is like a court trial, and, and the person's presenting the, uh, one side of the story, and the other side is not there. You're hearing one side. Thank you. Can I ask for an extra minute?
Yeah, yeah.
So, uh, so a lawn guy gets fired in a second like that, and a parking meter company, you gotta pay millions of dollars to get rid of them. I mean, this, what union does he belong to? I mean, it's, uh, that's a shame that a guy can do a job like that and just be cut off like that. I mean, if he's doing a bad job, I, I agree, but, uh, why do we get stuck in the contracts that you can't get out of? It's really bad. Be careful. And these cameras, I, I don't wanna discredit this person who's doing a great job, but I have to say, these, uh, what, cameras, uh, that are like, where are you gonna put them in the city? And the part they cover, each one's three thousand. I mean, how many cameras you gonna have? Two? You gonna have a hundred? This is two square miles. What's covering streets you gonna cover? In front of the bars, in front of the, you know, you're gonna need like fifty cameras to cover the whole city. That's, uh, I mean, here you go. I don't know, but did you look into that? I just don't think you guys are doing homework enough. I mean, I, I know it's a hard job to do this, to come here, but, uh.
I know, I agree.
We gotta have the other side of the story, and you're the other side of the story. We're only hearing the sales pitch. And you are the people that had to challenge the sales pitch, 'cause you represent us, 'cause we can't do it, except for three minutes, so thank you.
Thank you.
I did little bit.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Uh, Mister Mayor, that's all through public comments.
Mister Chair.
Okay, so we done? Yes, you wanna?
I realize, apologize. I had, uh, some observation. I'd like to suspend the law and I'd like to address that issue again, what I saw.
Okay.
If it's, it's okay for everybody.
That's fine.
So here, uh, I come from work around two o'clock in the Hamtramck, two o'clock in the morning. So, three days on row, I saw somebody try to block my car. Yep, so waiting, waiting, and I don't get out from my car. I wanna see who is that person. So I try to block them, you know, back up and try to make it, and then go away. So, so it is suspected carjacking or hijacking things, uh, I saw that, okay? So just wanna let everybody know, make sure you don't get out from the car. If it's some car behind you, waiting, or in the middle of the street, and just waiting, and that's all, uh, I did. I didn't call the police, and that time, they're gonna be gone anyway, so I, I, I use my caution.
Those cameras, is that good?
No, no, it's not gonna be good. Camera-related thing is gonna vary deeply what Bill tried to say. Arthony already discussed that one. I don't wanna my city to, somebody object for something else. These data could be the transfer somewhere else, and we don't know where that data going. I have a family member came from somewhere else, friend came with them. I don't know what kinds of person, him or she, and, and, and later on, from the data collection, and I'm gonna be the problem, "Oh, this guy came here. I need your question why they came here." We don't want that kinds of thing too. So that's the two male squad, our police department doing very good job. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, and.
But Mister, uh, Mayor, but other cities are doing it. Our local, uh, surrounding cities are doing it, and we have our primary keep going higher and higher, so somehow, we need to keep it controlled. So if we, if we always talk about the negative side instead of the positive side, so we have to, I think we need to have more, uh, presentation regarding this matter to see, you know, how, what kind of information we're gonna pass out to the other areas.
Alright, so from now until then, we do more research and study the pros and cons of this and, and see. And if it's gonna be installed, of course, that much cost, if we see it's good for the city, we are, we can't afford tens of them, we can just put them maybe in the entrances of the city.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. That's what my point is. We may need like five or six, maybe. That's the point, not the.
So, yeah, if, if it turns out to be good, so we will do some studies and research. Um, alright, thank you so much. And, and I, I would love to see some that can detect, uh, you know, those speeding cars and reckless drivers, give them tickets, you know.
Those are legal machines and so on.
They can do it, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, objective, physical.
Alright, okay. Thank you so much. I think we're done. We move to adjourn now.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Hold second.
Alright, it's seven, uh, eight forty-eight PM.